All right, let's move to the next item. Request approval of amended request for funds for the demolition of Central Haywood High School Gymnasium. Joe Buchanan is back with us today. And Joe, we've kind of heard the bad news. Or the news, anyway.
The news, good or bad. After we got our funds approved, we got engineers, architect in there, and I attached a letter from the architect and from the engineer stating that the cost to bring the foundation up and make the repairs was more than what the building was worth. Our board has asked for approval of the funds to demolition of Central Haywood's gym.
I hate to do that. I really do. For a lot of reasons.
The funds are already in budget, right, Julie? Hey, speaking of, we can't hear you.
There were funds in the budget to...
You better get real close, Julie, because they can't hear you.
The money was there to repair, and now we're switching the money to...
Yeah, or do seasons, like, say, "Demolish."
Yeah, was it 300,000?
Uh, 300, it's over 300,000.
Over 300,000, and now he's going to use 65,000 of that to demolish versus 380,000 to repair.
If y'all remember, we had that conversation on the different kinds of floors, potentially we was going to go back with, and then, obviously, that's not going to happen now, so...
We're saving you money.
Well, maybe. We're going to maybe do something again.
Joe, could you maybe simply tell us why we're having to tire it down, just so everyone knows, versus moving forward?
Give me just a minute. Our architect's Mark Lusk done structural engineering, was the company to come out, evaluated the foundation, the cracks in the walls that have been there for several years. After evaluation, I will skip the page and a half and go to the last paragraph where they summarized. Done structural engineering, I believe, to bring the building into code and safe operating condition would require the foundations to be underpinned around the entire building perimeter, the leaning front wall to be straightened or braced from further movement, the integrity of the CMU walls at the large side, wall cracks to be restored, the slender CMU walls around the building to be reinforced or buttressed, the damaged roof joists to be repaired, and the roof diaphragm, continuity and connections to the exterior walls be confirmed and repaired as necessary. I believe these repairs to be cost prohibitive and not feasible for a building with so much damage and so many deficiencies.
I guess my question is, what was usable, anything usable, in that building? Probably Z-R?
The ends.
The ends, okay.
So, the cracks are on the exterior gymnasium walls. There was not a lot of damage in each end where the locker rooms were, the training room, but they're attached to it, the gymnasium. So, really and truly, there's not any usable space in there.
And two floods, and it's a low area anyways.
Correct.
It eroded things away.
What year was it built, Joe? You know?
50s, 60s?
Was it?
It's been around a while. And I believe it survived one flood during construction.
Well, I guess the problem is, is that no matter how much you do to it, it's still in floodplain.
And, yeah, and like you said, the cost to do what you've got to do would be, just like probably building another build.
It would, and I was there when they were evaluating the soils and under the foundation and under the footers, and the deeper they went, the wetter and softer the soil got. So, I mean, it's bad. We've got the entire front wall dug out and revealed, down to the foundation or the footer.
Wow.
Well, I'm with Kevin. I mean, it's certainly difficult. It's sentimental. I coached a lot of basketball games in that gym, a whole lot of basketball games. Saw my kids play games in that gym, and unfortunately also had football camp in that gym. I don't care that it gets demolished for the football camp stuff, but it has a lot of memories associated with it. But, you know, you can't be like ants, and, you know, you pour water and destroy an ant mound, and they come back and build it in the same place, even though they know it's going to be, I mean, eventually, you know, we're going to see this thing get flooded again, and I understand the school board. Did they have plans to build anything else for Central Haywood and also for, you know, I know they don't have a responsibility to Clyde Youth, but Clyde Youth's been operating out of that gym for years and made improvements to it. Matter of fact, we took the bleachers from the old YMCA and put those bleachers in there, Clyde Youth did. So, is there, what kind of plans they have, do you know?
I have met with Mr. Mashburn about their needs as Central Haywood schools as far as a gymnasium. We've been talking with them with their long-term plans, their long-term needs, and our school board's looking at the long-term needs of the campus as well as the district. So, we're starting a long-term plan in this month. So, starting to develop it anyhow.
All right. Any other questions?
Just to comment, the decision's already been made to tire it down. We're not making that decision. We're just approving the funds to be able to do that. So, just want to be sure everybody knows that. So, unfortunately, it ain't our decision.
That's right.
Plus, they are using the auditorium in the Central Haywood High.
Correct.
It's kind of a half gym right now.
Intra.
Yeah.
All right. Well, and like Brandon said, we're just approving the funds. And we, but, you know, for the...
Needs to be done anyhow.
Yeah, we support the decision. I will entertain a motion that we approve the amended request for funds for the demolition of Central Haywood High School Gymnasium.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed?
Reluctant.
That passes unanimously. You know, you could have voted against it, and it still would have passed. You and I both could vote against it if it passed 3-2.
And then it would just sit there, wouldn't it? Just sit there.
Pretty sure my mom played in that gym.
I see Sheriff Christopher back there, too. He and I spent a lot of time in that gym, too. Oh, well. That passes unanimously, and we'll move to request approval of the annual Edward Brenn O'Brien Justice Assistance Grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of $11,555 for the purpose of purchasing sheriff's office equipment. Chief Deputy Jeff Hanes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
What I bring before you today is an annual grant application or seeking the permission and requesting that we move forward with our application for the U.S. Department of Justice, Edward Byrne. Justice Assistance Grant is, it is a no-cost block grant. It's considered, the old term was a JAG grant, if you're familiar with that. This particular one shows that we're in line to receive $11,555 to be used for equipment. And in that agenda request, it was specified that the equipment that we would be seeking would be a search and rescue jacket or vests, survival vests, throw bags for any kind of water issues that we encounter, which we do from time to time, and a thermal imager, imaging camera, which helps out in locating and searching for victims and/or suspects in a nighttime environment.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual Edward... Is it Brenn or Brian?
Byrne, Byrne.
It's Byrne?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's an interesting way to spell Byrne.
Well, that's what I said as well, too, and I would have thought it would have been pronounced a different way, but that's the way our grant manager has pronounced it, so that's what we'll go with.
All right. I'll entertain that motion to approve the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant application for the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount $11,555 as presented by Chief Deputy Jeff Hanes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And then, Jeff, you have the next one as well?
I do. Commissioners, I bring before you as well, too, a request for the approval of a revision to our existing contract with Appalachian Community Services to provide services at the Balsam Center, which is located up on 2374. We currently have one full-time person there, and we supplement it with part-time people. This started about a year ago, when we actually initiated that first process. For them, the long-term goal was for them to become a 24-hour facility to help relieve some of the burdens with involuntary commitments and also the mental health issues that we have, not only in the county but in the state. And this would be a fully reimbursable, to include benefits, uniforms, everything, obviously salaries as well, too, to add an additional FTE to pick up two full-time shifts, and then we'll still supplement it with part-time. But this would allow them to go into a 24-hour facility, which would help us greatly as well, too, because of the issues that Haywood Regional has with just overcrowding issues in the ED for behavioral health issues.
Would this, you know, I know we've talked about sometimes having to transport these, you know, when there's nothing or no, when you're full, you have to take them somewhere, and it's costing us money. That helps alleviate this?
It definitely helps alleviate it. We still are bound by general statute to transport out of the county if there's a location or a facility found out of the county, which is most often the case. But this alleviates the, for one, it alleviates the wait time, so we can get our deputies back out on the road to answer the services, the calls for services citizens put in place. But it also alleviates the overcrowding at Haywood Regional, and it offers a secondary location for us to be able to do that, because obviously there are a limited number of beds and versus the number of behavioral health patients that are being seen currently. So, yes, it would reduce that as well, too.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the revision of the contract with Appalachian Community Services by adding one additional full-time deputy sheriff on-site 12 hours per day at a cost of $40 per hour. And Jeff, this provides 24-hour...
It does. This will...
Sheriff, 24 hours a day up there, or deputy.
Yes, sir. What this will do is, we'll still have to supplement it with a few part-time secondary employment shifts, but very few, and this will open them up to a, to become a 24-hour facility, and that also opens them up to federal funding, which they've been sitting on right now, because they had to reach that plateau before they could do that, and it will open them up to additional federal funding, which will in turn help the county even that much more.
Okay. All right. That motion, anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Mike's motion.
Second.
Kevin's second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jeff. Next is request the budget amendment of 57-8 to cover the funds for the motion we just approved.
You got it. That's exactly what it is, 57-8. What we're doing is we're increasing the sheriff's salary and wages line item to cover this new FTE, and the money is coming from Appalachian Community Services, so we're increasing the revenue lines to cover that.
Okay. Any questions about that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for $57,800 to cover the FTE necessary to comply with the contract with Appalachian Community Services.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next is request approval of rate increase for self-pay for the dental clinic for 40% to 50%. Patrick Johnson, our public health director's here. Hey, Patrick.
Good morning. Okay, what you're looking at, I wanted to just mention a few things about our dental clinic. In 2017, 18, we had 37, 30 active patients. 75% of them are Medicaid, 5% of them other dental insurance, and 20% of them are self-pay. We have not increased our fees in the past six years. Most of what you're looking at, what you're looking at on here are our most common services. The last three on this are our most expensive services. We're requesting an increase because of increased operating costs, the increased cost of supplies, increased lab costs, and we're using an improved lab so that we have less folks coming back for adjustments. If you look at the very top, we are not charging anything, there's no increased charge for new patient visits. And this fee increase has been reviewed and approved by our Health and Human Service Finance Committee and our Health and Human Service Board. So, what we are looking at is basically an increase from 40%, the Medicaid rate, to 50% for self-pay patients. And it affects mainly people who are getting dentures and partials.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions about that?
I'm the commissioner that sits on that board, which, want to brag on the board for a few minutes. They do an excellent job. Our staff out there does an excellent job. We appreciate them. And also, just to point out, I think you've done a comparison to other counties, if you want to speak on that as well.
Yes, I did compare it to other counties, and we're right in line with the other counties, the ones that do dental services, Jackson and Clay and Macon County, right in line with them. And also, we're the only, we're much less than any private dental provider in Haywood County.
You have pretty big backup?
I'm afraid we do. Yes, sir. It's quite, it's difficult to, for us to manage all the folks who want to come into us for care right now. That's true.
How do you handle, like, emergency cases?
Well, we have a limit on how many new patients we see. We did have some information on how many new patients that we saw over the past year. We were seeing, the most we were seeing, for a while, we were seeing two new patients a day. We were trying to limit that, because we were having difficulty keeping up with the treatment plan on the patients who we were seeing. So, if you see that, when we were seeing new patients, then we set them up for a treatment plan, and we have to get them in, in a reasonable amount of time. And it's, and we're having fewer no-shows, so more and more of our patients are coming in for services. We have decreased our no-show rate considerably because of our electronic health record, which provides for a robo-text or call, and a human, we also do a human call the day before. And we, if people miss their appointment, we send them a letter, warning them that two more misses, they're suspended for a year, so they know our time is important and their time is important, so we want them to come in for their appointments. So, we've decreased our no-show rate from about, two years ago it was 30% to 15%, so we've cut that in half.
Good.
Did you want Gene to add something to that?
Do you have it? Oh, I'm sorry, Gene.
She came up there. I just...
About new patients? Oh, new patients we're seeing...
Step in there, Gene.
We are seeing at least new patients, two new patients a day. We do take emergency appointments for existing patients, so we try to squeeze them in wherever we can. And we do have a list of people who are trying to come in, as he said, yes, and we're booked out through November into December.
Yeah, it's a definite need, about everywhere, is dental care. All right. Anything else? Commissioners, any other questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion that we increase the self-pay for the dental clinic from 40% to 50%, as shown on attachment nine as presented by Patrick Johnson.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next, we have a request approval of the new public health fee of $85 for Department of Transportation physicals.
Thank you. We regularly get calls from folks asking for a Department of Transportation physical. We were lucky in April to hire Dana Ash, who is a certified, who's certified to do these physicals. She came to us from Clay County, and we called around and got the, these numbers that you're looking at, what is charged for these physicals, and our local CVS charges $144 for a DOT physical. So, we are, the average you see is $119, and we are recommending $85 for this physical. And we have reviewed it with the Finance Committee from the Health and Human Services, and the Health and Human Services Board has reviewed and approved this as $85. And we would ask your approval to get this started as soon as possible.
Okay. Brandon, you got anything on that?
No, just, again, we're just trying to bring things back in line with what we see around us, so, and help cover the cost, so...
Okay. Commissioners, have any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to increase the public health fee to $85 for the Department of Transportation physicals.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate you. Next is request approval to declare a surplus, 13 sheriff's office vehicles with a total value of approximately $10,300 for use as trade-ins on a 2014 Ford Edge from Taylor Motor Company. We have Chief Deputy Jeff Hanes and Major Jason Smiley with us.
Good morning, once again, Commissioners. In this specific request, it's for the approval to declare a surplus, 13 vehicles of many different levels of decomposition, I guess would be a good way of saying, with a total value of approximately, and I'm going to defer to Major Smiley here in just a moment. It says on there, $10,300 for use of trade-in on another vehicle, but actually, the buyer's quote that we received back, or the buyer's orders, actually is $12,000, I think, that was previously discussed. With that, and for the details, I want to defer to Major Smiley.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is 13 vehicles with various issues that we have gotten the good out of. Most of them either don't run or will not move due to transmission problems or a lot of other various issues, and to trade those in on a good-running vehicle with a remaining cost of $75.66. And I have a statement from the county garage, from Michael Head, who has listed out all the different issues and problems. And I know in years past, we sold these vehicles at public auction at the impound lot, and those same type vehicles, you know, we're used to getting maybe $200 to $400 a piece out of, so I see that it's really fair from what they're giving us as a trade-in.
Okay. So, for efficiency purposes and probably financially, it's better that we just go ahead and trade all these vehicles and try to, instead of try to sell them separately for this, for the trade that you have set up here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, if they're giving us a $12,000 trade-in, that's an average $923 per vehicle, and you've stated that we're lucky if we get $400 on a surplus market. And then, being in the car business or the repair business, I can tell you how expensive it is to put a transmission and stuff in a vehicle, and so, and it's better than them sitting around, because I think that's happened in the past. We end up with vehicles sitting around that's not in good repair or whatever, and, you know, so...
Not only that, but it takes a lot of time. If you do them individually or sell them off individually, it takes a lot of time and effort, so doing it all at one time's a whole lot better and easier.
Yeah, what do you guys, you guys are good with this? You know about cars, both of you.
Car guys.
Sounds like we getting a lot of mileage out of these cars. You driving them until the tires fall off and the transmission falls out.
Literally.
Yeah.
And it'll give us space in our impound lot. It's absolutely full right now with these cars, so...
Okay.
I just got to point out, I noticed that they're almost all Fords, and I've got a Chevy truck that I still drive, it's a 99, and a 2005 vehicle, it's GMC, so...
We can't do commercials, can we?
No. I bet you're buying Fords, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Good point, Kevin. I'm a Moti guy, too.
And, you know, another thing, too, these vehicles are extreme use. I mean, it's not your average, just driving on the highway. You've got mountains and up and down and getting pretty fast and having to, you know, respond quickly to things and up roads, so it's extreme-use mileage.
Absolutely, yes. The, Michael Head at the garage, he has put a lot of emphasis into that I just really need to get them off the road due to the safety issues. We've spent money on these vehicles, but it's just that comes to that time, you can't keep putting money into something with that many miles on it.
Lot of '04s and '06s and...
Yes, sir.
Very old vehicles.
Y'all know, if they run on a used car lot, $1,000, $1,200, if you're lucky, then you're carrying the notes. That's how you're getting the extra money, so getting a pretty good trade-in right there.
All right. There's no other questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve to declare surplus, the 13 sheriff's office vehicles attached as Exhibit 11 for use as trade-ins on the 2014 Ford Edge from Taylor Motor Company.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate you getting that information.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Of course. Next is Julie Davis. I'm not even going to state the whole thing, I'll just let you, so there's something for you to present.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is a budget amendment to put the $7,566 into the budget to cover the difference in the amount they're paying for the vehicle and the amount of the trade-in. And the money that they are using to do this is from property that the sheriff's office has received, from properties seized by illegal gambling. You'll remember, they had about $13,000 a few weeks ago, and part of it they're giving to the town of Waynesville. This is another part of that money, same pot of money.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment for $7,566 to purchase a vehicle trade-in using the proceeds from illegal gambling.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Next is request approval of a base fee to be paid by the county to all fire departments in the county with federal land within the fire department service area, and to approve an amount per response for those fire departments who are called to a search and rescue event on federal lands in the county. Joel Mashburn, our county manager, will give us a little more detail.
Thank you. Just to begin with, I think everyone's aware that when we're talking about, we're talking about payments in lieu of taxes, and what that is, is funds that we receive from the federal government for, in lieu of the taxes that we would be able to collect on that land if it wasn't in federal ownership. But since it is federal, we can't collect taxes. And somewhere around 40% of the land that was... And somewhere around forty percent of the land that we have in Haywood County is in federal lands. So several months ago, discussion was started in what happens to the payments in lieu of taxes, and why the fire departments are not receiving some of that, since some of the forest land is in their fire districts. And so, after some discussion and looking at this, it was determined that there was probably about five departments that actually had federal land in their districts, and that they were responding to rescue-type operations more than they were to fire operations in those areas. But they were not individually receiving any of the proceeds from the PIL funds. PIL funds have been averaging around three hundred thousand dollars a year. That changes from year to year. There is currently a lawsuit that might increase even the amount that we would receive. But previously, the funds that we received from the federal government would go into the general fund as a revenue and would be used as any other revenue source could be used. There were no limitations on how we could use those funds. And looking at the possibility of sharing some of those funds with the fire departments, we looked at two or three different scenarios. I don't have any spreadsheets we've actually looked at over the period of time, and trying to come up with something that would be fair and equitable, but at the same time, realize that, that if we take any funds out of the proceeds that we currently receive, that would cut down on the amount that we would be able to use for other purposes. Law enforcement, emergency management, EMS, things, other uses that we currently put those funds to. So Julie and I have been working on this for several weeks now. And again, there were several scenarios that we looked at. First of all, maybe the most logical thing would have been to say, well, let's just look at what percentage of federal lands each department has, and maybe divide it that way. Then when you look at that, though, you find that you've got a situation where you've got some fire departments that have a large acres, a large amount of acres, in their districts, but yet they're not responding to many calls into those acreage. An example would be, without being specific, we have one department that has fifty thousand, fifty-six thousand acres, but only responded to one call last year in that area. Yet we have another department that has fifteen thousand acres and responded to the majority of calls in that area. They responded to over twenty calls. So we didn't feel that it was equitable to base it on the number of acres, since that would not necessarily be indicative of how much money those departments would have to spend in order to be able to respond to the calls in those areas. So we started looking at the possibility, well, maybe let's do a base amount, where every department would get a certain amount of money. But then again, if you just did it on the base amount and didn't recognize the amount of calls that they made, you would, you would also create some inequity, because some departments would get a lot of money but didn't make any calls at all. So what we've finally come up with is a recommendation, and you have a copy of this as your attachment thirteen, that we would, first of all, we would base a portion of it as a base amount, and every department would get the same base amount. In other words, that would give them funds that they could use to at least be prepared for, with equipment, supplies, whatever they may need to respond. Every department would get the same base amount. And then, the remainder would be based on the number of calls that they would make into that area during the previous year. So looking at two thousand and seventeen, if we did that, and those are the numbers that you have before you, you can see that Crusoe Fire Department made twenty calls into the federal government area. Lake Logan made zero, Fines Creek made one, Sanuke made zero, and Jonathan Creek made one. There's, that's last year. There's no real indication that that may be the way it is going to be for two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and nineteen, but at least if we base it on the previous years, we have some factual numbers that we can base it on. So if we did that, you can see that if we base it with everybody getting at least a thousand dollars, and then basing the rest of it on three hundred and fifty dollars per call, that would mean that Crusoe would get seven thousand calls, plus the one thousand would bring them eight thousand. Lake Logan, even though they didn't make any calls, they were there, they had the potential to make calls. And so they would get a thousand dollars. Fines Creek would get thirteen fifty. Sanuke would get a thousand dollars, because they also made no calls during the previous year. And then Jonathan Creek made one, and they would get thirteen fifty. So that, using this one thousand dollars as a base and three hundred and fifty dollars as a per-call basis, that would bring the total that we would be taken out of the PIL funds for fire departments of twelve thousand seven hundred dollars. Now, again, that's using a number that arguably could be, you know, changed, either increased, decreased, but we felt comfortable with making that as a recommendation, that a thousand dollars a year, and over a period of, you know, five years, every department would get five thousand dollars, just base whether they made any calls or not, and then the other departments would be based on the number of calls that they make. So the recommendation that we're making to you at this time is that you would, from proceeds from the PIL funds, that based on the year two thousand and seventeen, that we would, and the departments that have federal lands in their district, a one thousand dollar base, and then three hundred and fifty dollars per call into the fire district.
Okay, well, I had discussions last week, well, I guess we've had discussions a couple times about what to come up with. So what I want to hear is from you guys on this formula, instead of, and then I can follow up with the input that we talked about.
Our first impression is very fair. The base, plus the number of times you have to use your equipment, that doesn't make a difference. So very fair.
Just a few comments. I have been very involved with several of the fire departments, meeting with them and discussing some of these things with them. And I'm probably one of the ones that brought this up to begin with. But, you know, I look at it, and I guess it is fair to a certain extent, other than, I think you said we're bringing roughly three hundred thousand, is that right, in, I know that changes year over year, but to only give the fire departments twelve thousand seven hundred, I don't think's really fair to them, and that's based on several different things. I know that Crusoe, for example, travels up and down that mountain with their fire trucks, a lot of wire and tire on their trucks. If they go on rescues or searches, they have to have, they've got to buy other things that, say, a city fire department don't have to buy, for example, four-wheelers, side-by-sides, ATVs, a lot of search things that they use to go look for people. I just personally don't feel like three hundred and fifty dollars is enough money, you know, when they go on one of these calls to even cover their cost. I know they don't have to, you know, most of these guys are volunteers, they spend a lot of time, money, and effort to go on these calls, and I would like to see that raised, personally. Like I said, I went up to a meeting that Crusoe had, been with Lake Logan as well, haven't talked to the other fire departments in depth about this situation, but I just feel like we could give a little bit more money for their efforts, because they are doing us a good job on these searches and rescues, or even if it's answering a car on fire on a parkway or whatever it is. Again, I just don't feel like the three hundred and fifty dollars is enough. And something else, you know, the thousand dollar base, you know, my first thought is maybe making that a base rate if they answer at least one call, instead of zero calls. That way, you know, might be a little fire as well. Just some, some things to consider.
Well, that's kind of... Thought it was a pretty, pretty good start, you know. Of course, I know, I know a lot of what you're talking about. Of course, I know a lot of the fire departments are already buying a lot of that equipment, you know. I know Jonathan Creek has that equipment, and they only got one call, so, you know, they're using it to, for, you know, regular calls and whatever. So I thought it was a good start. You know, I hadn't really given it much thought as to anymore. I know that, but when I looked at it, it seemed to be at least a start, so.
One of the reports we got, or at least when we were gathering some information, was that the, the cost per call was like, averaged at about two hundred dollars between all the fire departments when we took the numbers. And did we confirm, did we get confirmed from the fire departments that that's what they were reporting, was their cost per call? Did we ever confirm that?
The information that I got from Greg was that he got from the fire departments that that was their cost per call. And they ranged anywhere from a hundred and twenty-eight dollars as a cost per call on up to two hundred and fifty-four. And the county costs per calls were closer to three hundred, and I think that's where you thought we might want to increase it up just a little bit.
When I saw the county cost per call, it was right around three hundred. So I said, listen, let's, let's just go ahead and make this three fifty, which was more than the reported cost to call from the fire departments. But I knew that the county's was three hundred, so I, so we said, let's go ahead and put three fifty. So that, we kind of gauged in there. Now, I'm not stuck to three fifty, but that's, I just wanted to, I guess, explain that, you know, I'd already considered what you were concerned about, and tried to bump it up, and say, let's go with three fifty a call, because it really, in the scheme of things, wasn't that much money, and as far as the money that we do receive. Although that money that we do receive is not just for search and rescue, it's, you know, it's for the fact that the county, the county can use that money for anything they want to use it for, it's just supplemented because we don't get to tax that. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not wed to this at all or any formula, but I don't know where you start, I don't...
Well, you know, I was just sitting here thinking, I don't know where, you said Greg got the information from the fire departments, you know. I know that, talking with Lake Logan and Crusoe again, they have a lot of additional costs, you know, on equipment and wire and tire on them trucks running up and down that mountain, as far as tires, transmissions, and so forth. So I guess in the back of my mind, I don't know that two fifty, three hundred, what that covers, if it's just fuel, you know, because it's definitely not paying for other things, I wouldn't imagine. So I don't know, again, where that information, and also the twenty calls, I see it come from our CAD system, but the report that was given to me just from Crusoe along, I know, during two thousand and seventeen, they gave me some report that I thought come from a CAD system that showed, and I'm going off the top of my head, but it was sixty-some calls, like sixty-seven calls that they answered. And I'm not sure if that all come through the nine-one-one system or what, but I know that this says it come through the CAD system, so they, there's a couple of things that, personally, I would like to verify on the calls versus the cost, you know, before I feel comfortable voting on it, anyway.
Well, I think that's what I'm getting at, I mean, it's a, it's a good start, based on what we've got, you know, it's a start, and I mean, you can always adjust it as needed, you know, if in fact, you know, they can report. But you all, I guess, that's the average cost of what they're reporting, and obviously, those averages, that's coming from Crusoe, because they've got the most cost, I would assume, I mean, most calls, is that...
As, and these were really just zeroed in on search and rescue calls, that's what, that's what these were. There may have been some other calls, there may have been some calls that they didn't respond to. These were response to calls for search and rescue on federal lands.
Okay, well, that, that may be your discrepancy, because if it's search and rescue calls, you know, I mean, if they had a wreck on the, on the parkway...
Right, and they have a lot of those.
You know, and so, that, that may be where they would gain, because if you included, I mean, heart attacks and, you know, potential injuries or whatever, I mean, I don't know. What do you, I mean...
I mean, it, you know, certainly if there's more calls than that, and we're going to cover more calls, we need to make sure of what those calls are. I mean, we needed to have a definite, a definition of exactly what a call is. I mean, all I've had was the report of twenty calls, so.
Yeah, rescue, but I know, I talked to one of the guys, and I guess it's Crusoe, that would they, did they respond to Pisgah National, Pisgah Inn?
Mount Pisgah. Or the Pisgah Inn, sorry. They do, you know, and that's another thing, you know, half, the way the line comes across the Pisgah Inn, and again, I may be wrong, but like, the parking lot is in one county, and the inn's in another, but all the calls that come from up there go to Crusoe. And from what I understand, Transylvania County gets helper funding from the state because they consider it in Transylvania County, but all the calls...
Come to us.
Come to us.
Wonder who we talked to about that, but anyway, what I was going to reference is that murder up there, that Crusoe responded to, and I think they were tied up. So that would be a call that wouldn't probably consider to search and rescue call. Oh, well, I don't know, but anyway, that may be the discrepancy on what you're talking about, what you're seeing, but...
But again, you know, they go on these search and rescues, or I remember a crane had went across the parkway and fell off the side of the parkway one time. And each one of these situations, sometimes they may spend three, four days up there looking for somebody, or lifting the crane back up over the side of the mountain. So it just seems to me that the cost would be more than the three fifty, but again, that's just me. If they're telling you that, then...
Just to clarify, when you said there was much more than twenty, the first report we received from the CAD program had Crusoe at fifty-three responses to federal property, including the parkway. Now, the, from what I understand, there is an agreement, when Crusoe responds to the parkway, that they get federal funds from another source when they respond to those calls. So we zeroed it, narrowed it down to search and rescue, where there is no funding going to the fire departments. But it truly was, it was fifty-three, it was close to your sixty number that you mentioned.
Okay. Just a comment there as well, Julie, I know that when I spoke to them, they say they're getting zero funding from anybody, so.
Well, I'm pretty sure, you know, and maybe the, somebody needs to be finding out, because I think Jonathan Creek, if they, if they respond to the national park, they get, they get some money, or they get a...
Nationals is different, though, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Julie, you probably know more about that.
Well, there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of entities that actually do get funding when they respond. For example, the sheriff's office gets funding from the US Forest Services, Service when they respond to forest land, however, it's only for law enforcement, no fire departments get any of that type of money. And there are certain agreements in place for the parkway, and there's certain agreements in place, I think, between fire departments, even for I-40. But as far as federal lands, that are not forests, now Forest Service does reimburse some, but like I say, I have not found they, they have in their rules that they will help out any fire department, it's just law enforcement. And we can certainly drill down a little bit more on any of these. The information, I did not talk to fire departments, the information I got went straight through emergency management and in our CAD system.
Let me ask this, what do you think about at least the formula, whether we move the numbed figures or not, but are you guys satisfied with doing a formula where we give a base pay, either maybe if they don't make a call, maybe they don't get a base pay, but a base pay and then payment on, based on the number of calls?
Yes.
So we can, we can pretty much agree on that. So maybe we need some, because we don't have to decide this today, but I do want to... But I do want the fire departments, the ones that are covering the search and rescue, to know that we're, you know, we're considering this and we want to do something. It's just a matter of the amount.
We need to know what a call is.
Right. And like I said, the reason on the calls was because when I took Haywood County, it was 300. And I figured, okay, I know they're going to report what an actual cost of the call. So that's why we
Sure.
moved it up to the 350 to be fair. But, you know, I don't know how fair it is. And I'm sure that they, you know, there's some equipment they're going to buy anyway. But there's also equipment they use for that purpose and.
I guess their point is they're having to buy some of this equipment. And they're not like other departments where they can save that money to buy fire trucks and stuff that they need, just like other departments. They're saying they have to buy additional equipment and stuff, so.
What do they think is fair, Brandon? Do they give you a number?
Oh, no, they've not given me any kind of number. Their thoughts are that the PIL money is for them. And, you know, I've tried to explain that, you know, that's not the case. The PIL money can be used for whatever the county sees fit because it is what it stands for, you know, payment in lieu of taxes.
Right, yeah.
But I just want to be sure that we are being fair to them. That's my whole goal.
We haven't done anything, and we're doing something. So I think, like I said, I think that we're being, based on the numbers that we're getting, we need to look at potentially how their calls are, you know, rated. But, you know, I think it's a good start.
Something else I just thought of was the radios. For example, they get on these searches, and it's very important they communicate. They were telling me about a time they had actually found a lost hiker. And communication was not that good, and it was in pretty rough weather. So they had people out still looking, couldn't get a hold of them. So, you know, communication is really important. I mean, it could even potentially cost a life. So, anyway.
Okay. So, yes, sir.
One of the informations that we need to get is how much are fire departments currently getting from other sources at the current time? And for what purpose are they getting those funds? And then there seemed to be another question as to how much it's actually costing them to make a response. And we use some numbers that were given to us from emergency management. But you're saying that they are able to show that they actually, it's costing them more to make a response into that area than we're showing. So I guess what we would need to do is to try to come up with, and it may be different for every department. I don't know. But you wouldn't want to base it on every department's call. I mean, it needs to be a standard charge or a standard fee, whatever we pay.
If you took an average or something of that, maybe of the five departments that we got, you know, and it's not just the call, the cost of that call, but the cost of the equipment to get to that call, I guess, is what I'm after. So if there's any additional cost. And not only that, but the number of calls as well, you know, if it's a car wreck or a search and rescue or whatever it is, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we'll continue to look into that.
So we just table.
We'll just, we'll say it again on the next.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. We did have an adjustment to the agenda and added to the agenda closed session in regards to personnel. And then also, what is the statute number for attorney-client privilege?
I'll have to give that for you.
318.11.
I'll give that for you. I don't remember the number. You'll say attorney-client privilege, we can fill it in.
All right. I want to say A4, but I don't remember. So I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to personnel, NCGS 143.318.11A6, and attorney-client privilege, NCGS 143.318.11A, and we're going to leave it to something. I think it's four. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. And we are in closed session. Okay, we're back after closed session, and we don't have any action after closed session. Does anyone else have anything to add to open session? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. We are adjourned.